Session, this is the planning board meeting Tuesday, April 13th. Our first order of business is to do a roll call. So I think I will just call your name, although you're all here, so we don't have to quite do the Zoom thing anymore. I think we're all here, I'm not sure.
Jamie.
Yeah, is Jamie? We don't know if Jamie's going to be on Zoom or not.
We do not. He did receive a link today, everyone did, just in case, but we don't, we have not heard anything.
All right, I'm just going to read names then and say, present if you are here. First one, Jamie Daniels. On Zoom, Jamie. On telephone, okay. Not present, Hal Goodman.
Present.
Nicole Northrup, here. Field Scarborough.
Present.
And me, Sherri Wickstrom. So our second order of business is to adopt the agenda. Is there a motion to do so?
I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
All right, we have a motioner, is there a seconder?
I'll second that.
So Hal is the motioner, we have a seconder, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. So we have an agenda as it stands, there are copies of the agenda over here on the table for anyone who might want one. The third order of business is the approval of the minutes of March 9th. Those have been distributed. Are there any corrections on those minutes?
I want to correct something I misstated last week. I was asking for a crossing light at Annanize Dare and Surraltar Alley, I meant Budley. There is also already one at Surraltar Alley, but.
I think that might have been in the, she did, Jamie did catch that, and that actually appeared in the minutes. So, so then there are, I mean, since it was listed in the minutes, we don't need to correct that, okay, very well.
I'll move that the minutes be approved.
All right, we've got a motioner, is there a seconder?
I'll second.
All right, we've got a motion by Hal Goodman, we've got a second by Field Scarborough, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, that is unanimous. All right, so the next item on the agenda is what we call the public comment, and this is where members of the public are invited to address the planning board. So public comment is not intended to require the board to answer any impromptu questions or to take any action on items brought up during the public comment period. Speakers will address all the comments to the board as a whole and not one individual member. Discussions between speakers and members of the audience will not be allowed. Time limits are three minutes per person or five minutes per group. Please come forward to the podium, identify yourselves so that your statements can be recorded. So, and let me just find out, do we have anyone who is on, so, no, no one at all?
Madam Chair, there are, there are no attendees, and Member Daniels is not attending virtually.
All right, so we do have people in our audience, and so I know that we have one person for sure who would like to speak. Would you like to find the podium? And give your name, please.
My name's Malcolm Fearing, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak, even if it's in public comment.
So Malcolm, can I just stop you one moment? I just wanted to say one thing, I think there had been a misunderstanding that Malcolm thought he was going to be doing a presentation, so I think Malcolm will be getting the five minutes, so go right ahead.
Okay, what I want to talk about is housing, that seems to be the buzzword, and I wanted to come forward to the entire board because I've been talking with staff and Sherri have had conversations over the past months about trying to bring forth a project to talk to the town about. And this is not a presentation for any action, it's just a presentation for information, and it concerns property our family owns on Bowser Town Road. I'm not going to read all of it to you, I think we are all acutely aware of the issues that we have with housing. I've been in this issue for 38 years now, trying to bring forth housing for our community. It's critical, it hits all aspects of our community, from lower income, middle income, to higher income, professional, non-professional, it's a critical issue. Next slide. Some information, each one of y'all have this information, and this was gathered from Realtor.com, I'm not saying it's accurate, but it's from Realtor.com. A medium income, a medium priced home on Roanoke Island is about $375,000. So in this, in the paperwork that you have, there's some information that I'm going to talk about, about the interest rate, 30 years to pay for a down payment. Anybody about $70,000 sitting in the bank? It's a problem, it's a problem, okay? The amortization just for that is around $1,300 a month, is just for the interest and principal. Next slide. I'm using the illustration of building 1,200 square foot home, which I would say would not be a large home. I'm using an illustration of $150 square foot, some say it's higher, I had already my tail on the building trends and it's lower. So you combine that with a $65,000 lot, I do, and up many $65,000 lots. So I'm on the low end on all these illustrations conscripted. That equates to a $49,000 they'll pay to get your house, if you're going to buy a house, okay? So on the monthly payments, at 3.13, I don't know if that's a good way out here to go down a little bit now, maybe you can get a loan. The mortgage payment's 840, you put the wind insurance, and this is just a generic price, that's about $184 a month. You put dare and town taxes of $107 a month, you come up to about $1,284 just in hard costs for the house, okay? And that's the problem. One, I would say, if you go back to the prior slide, you're looking at an average of $370-some thousand dollars. Next slide. On Bowser Town Road, our family, LSC, owns a partial land, and I thought I could point with this laser for that, that's right. On the right is a commercial piece of property, it's all one track, has been subed, I think I can come forward to y'all in your future to talk about subdivision. There's a mixed use there, and I'll show that in the illustration, and there are several lots, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight lots, and each lot has a principal house on front, and then a small house on the left, okay? Which I believe, as we go through the continued process with the town planner and town manager, this will meet your zoning ordinances. Our attempt is to come forward and ask for no favor, to present to y'all claim that it exactly meets your ordinance. Next slide. Okay, that's an example of a commercial use already in town, commercial down load, that one has two residential, next slide. Same thing with this, you have a commercial downstairs, one residential upstairs, that is more of what we're talking about, next slide. And you can just flip through the slides, I think we have somebody that lives in this house, okay? And these are, that's, we know somebody lives in that house. This is a small house that we rent for like $500 a month, and it was a garage apartment, next slide. But what I'm, and you can just flip through, these are illustrations of what we believe are market available homes, small homes. And in a small home, you can keep the rents lower, and that's what we're talking about. We're not talking about a project that would be for sale, we're talking about a subdivision that would be for rent, and it's our family, LSC. So again, I wanted to come forward with you all, let you know about it, a couple of y'all have been there and seen it, but I wanted to bring this forward to the town, planning board in full disclosure, for transparency, so we can, if you have questions of us, you can talk to us in a later point in time, which all will be thinking about it, because our desire is to bring forward again a product that meets your needs exactly, so thank you for allowing me to speak, and I hope I did it.
Just a little over, but you get this.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm used to being in principal boxes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Really appreciate that, and we look forward to seeing that product come forward through Melissa. Very well. All right, is there anyone else who might wish to speak? No, nobody, all righty. So we will move on to our next, and that is new business, and this is the review of the Shallow Bag Bay Sewer Pump Station. And so just to give you an overview, the Preservation and Architectural Review Committee had this Shallow Bag Bay Sewer Pump Station on their agenda on April 5th. And so this group watched a great presentation, very helpful, by James Ayers to the Board of Commissioners, and that you all will be seeing tonight, and I think that will be very helpful for you too. But why it was important for us to see that is that it helped us really visualize what this pump station is planned to do. So there was great, great discussion from the Park Committee, and generally the view was, well, first of all, everyone on that committee, you know, knows that we really do need a better sewer pumping system than what currently exists. And so, you know, Park was really looking at the architecture of the building and how that worked in the environment. So, but it was a great discussion, and generally the view was that the structure was a bit too tall. And so members of Park suggested that one of the things that could be done to sort of reduce that very large feel of that building was to remove the cupola, and that would shorten the height of it. So that was a suggestion. They approved the look of the, the plan for the pump station, because they overall said that it fit very well into the campus where there's the marine, or the Maritime Museum and the Ella View Shed. So everyone really thought that looked like it fit very well. So Park also really endorsed this idea of this wooden floor also with a front porch that was on the long side of the, of the pump station. And the idea behind that is that chairs can be placed out there and people can actually sit and get out of the sun. So that was something that Park really thought worked very well, the building style, as I mentioned, they thought blended very well. And then the one question that they did have was, could the overall size be reduced somewhat? Or was that size required to hold, you know, for the engineering and the operation of the pump? So I think Melissa will be able to give us the answer to that, that was a question that, that Park had. And so just to sum up, Park's view was that they made a motion that they would like to see the, the cupola removed, but they really liked the drawing of it. So I think I will turn it over to Melissa, and she has got some answers to Park's questions, and by the way, Park did make a motion on that at their meeting.
Yes, Madam Chair, and do you want me to show the video first or answer the questions?
Since we've got some Park folks here, why don't you answer that one question?
Okay, I need to, actually, I put all the drawings over there, I'm going to grab one, I'll be right back. So we had a question based on the drawings that I used for the Park meeting about the height of the building, and it wasn't clear to us based on the drawings that we had, so the town manager was able to work with the engineering firm to get us a total calculated height, which is on the furthest left-hand side of the top drawing on your packet. So the total height with the cupola is 29 feet, three inches, and that's to the top pitch, that cupola pitch of the roof. And then that, that cupola adds four feet, eight and a half inches, so down to the second pitch of the roof. So without the cupola, it would be roughly 25 feet, which is certainly much lower than the allowed 36 feet to the top plate in the area, so really, it's, it's 12, I think, nope, 15 feet to the top plate, which is what I thought at Park, because we had that, that drawing. So, but the other question that came up was, did the engineering in fact draw, or drive the height of this building? And that is true. Josh O'Brien, our utility superintendent, met on site with the engineers with our back truck, which is the truck that would be used to service the pumps, and it is in fact to the spec of, of all of that engineering. So we know that there's enough clearance to get those pumps out, and it's, it's not over engineered, so.
Well, it has to be that high, if you look at the double doors that they have on there, that's to be able to get the pumps in and out.
That's right.
And the double doors are, are governing the top plate height of the main structure, so it has to be every bit of that height.
That's right.
Great.
Great.
Let's see the presentation.
Okay, it'll take me just a second.
And we have James here, too.
And James is here in attendance, that's right.
Shallow Bag Bay Sewer Pump Station, we'd had, we'd had, of course, a request to get the latest update as soon as we got the newest information in on that, on that pump station, and we do have it, so we're going to go ahead and fire up a, fire up a slideshow here, and on the very, on the very cover of this is a Shallow Bag Sewer Pump Station, and it shows a photo from back in the, back in the day when this actually, there was a sewer plant down where the lighthouse sits now. As we go to the first page, this, the first page will sound very familiar to the board because the project objectives have not changed. We want to continue sewer service to a wide area of town. Second, we want to protect the environment by preventing sewer overflows, and that is just so, that's just so important both for public health and environmental health. And the third is to ensure that we have service even in severe weather events or power outages such as we experienced during Hurricane Dorian. Now on the next page, when I mentioned we're talking about sewer service to a wide area of town, the next page is actually a, I highlighted a map that shows in yellow, red, and blue, our service area goes well beyond downtown. It also goes on the north end with the Wingina Lift Station that actually pumps to this sewer pump. Second, we also have an area on the west side of town, this is from the Burnside Lift Station, and there's Burnside, George Howe, Sir Francis Drake, et cetera, and of course the downtown area, so all three of those sub-basins flow to this, to this old infrastructure. Now as we move on to the next slide, this is where we talk about the project scope, so we know we've, we've got something here, what are we doing? So first off, we are replacing this existing pump station that was originally constructed in the early 1940s. You can imagine for any infrastructure like that, that is well past end of life. Second, we need to raise that wet well height above the ground to resist flooding. The current station is basically at ground level, and anybody who's been here, when the west wind blows 20 miles an hour or more, we get inundated, so we've got to make sure to avoid that situation. So we also though, when the power goes out, we absolutely have to have emergency generators as a backup power source. Dorian proved that to us, but there are other times, it's not just a hurricane where a power outage can happen, so being so dependent on, on that, we'll take that, take that away with the emergency generator. And last but not least, we have to construct a building or some structure to protect that pump station, all the electrical controls, as well as the generator itself. You get high voltage electricity in there, last thing you want to do is have kids or kids or things in there. So going to the next slide, we actually show the project location, and we're, the current, there's a big red arrow there pointing toward, just to the side of the weather station, oh the, I'm sorry, the weather tower parking lot. And if you look at, this is actually from an old aerial photo, and looking at the, looking at the surveys from three decades ago, at that location, there actually used to be a one-story brick building, a one-story frame building, and then of course, the sewer pump station itself. Luckily, we've, the sewer pump station has been moved out to the Bowser Town facility, and also trying to, those buildings are no longer in place. But if we go to the next slide, it will start to illustrate where we're at today. So this is a more recent photo, you'll see the light, you'll see the Roanoke Marshes Lighthouse there, of course, at the, at the end of the, end of the pier, and we'll also, it circles on the, on the weather tower parking lot and the current lift station that's right next to the weather tower itself. Now we identified this in our last briefing a few months ago, but some of the things, the key things we had to do here is, number one, protection of the view shed, because there are people who now no longer have that, you know, the old, the old buildings blocking their view, so we want to make sure that we don't impact the, as the area has changed. We also want to protect specimen trees, I mean, specimen trees, they're gorgeous, they have grown up, and we want to make sure to preserve that experience, because there, many times folks will be down there sitting under those trees on a hot summer day, and it's just a wonderful experience. And we also want to be sensitive, sensitive to any architectural concerns, whether it's the manual way or any other, any other rules and regulations we have out there from a planning perspective. Now as we go to the next slide, this is one that you all have seen before, this is back when we staked the area that was being proposed, and this is about protection of view shed. So if you look at the slide on the right-hand side, you'll actually see, in the close foreground, you'll see the weather tower, in the middle, in the middle ground there, you'll see a little bit of the wood that is on top of the existing lift station there at, at the ground level, and behind it, you will see the waterfront condos to the right, and then to the left in the background, you'll see the, the various buildings there, the quarry building, the other adjacent buildings there on the other side of Fernando Street, fronting Queen, fronting Queen Elizabeth. So right, if we had, if, in theory, if we had tried to put the pump station in this area, it probably wouldn't be technically feasible, because it's already an existing pump station, you can't hold on top of the old one, but if we had tried to put it there, we'd be blocking all of these views, and we certainly don't want to do that. If you go to the left-hand side, though, you'll see by putting it in front of existing trees that are already in front of any potential views, but also getting it out of, away from other land, such as, it's the main park area, we certainly are trying to cite this in a way that's sensitive to those views. Now if we go to the next slide, we talked about those trees, well, we've got building issues, so protection of the specimen trees, we have got the updated plan here, and we made sure with our engineering firm and their surveyors, we made sure that they actually went up to those trees and looked up at the drip line and captured the trees, and so we needed to site this with the TAMA guidelines, site it away from the water as far as possible, but we didn't want to put it so far back into the trees that we were hurting those, those large specimen oaks, so we want to definitely protect those. As a kind of side note, there, you can, there's a very small line here, we, this, this land down along the waterfront, there's actually an assemblage of different properties. So this particular pump station, we have kept it completely on land that the town purchased, it is outside of the boundary of the property that was assembled with the, with the wonderful help of the Creve family, so this building is off of that property which had been discussed in the past, so we're trying to be sensitive to that as well. And of course, we talked about being sensitive to the manual way, so let me go to the next slide, you'll actually see a couple little pictures here, one's a drawing, one's a picture. On the right-hand side, it's a concrete, it's a concrete, a concrete wet well for, for pump station, and they're not exactly pretty. In our case, we were actually going to add things around it, things like metal stairways, things so that we can actually get up and access the pumps and maintain the facility. On the left-hand side is a big generator set, and in this particular case, this is the generator we talked about as being able to provide that backup power, make us resilient and not have power outages take us down. Of course, this also has to be up in the air, we have to get it out of the flood zone, because last thing you want to do is have floodwaters, you know, sit there and, let's just say, water and electricity don't mix very well. So by, but instead of having these up in the air and open where kids, not only would they be unsightly, but we certainly can't have kids or anybody fall in or, or fall off of these things or get themselves hurt, we have to put a structure around to protect them, and that's also for the life of the project, you know, if these are exposed, the elements year-round, that certainly is not very good for their lifespan. So let's go to the next page, though, we talked about being sensitive from an architectural standpoint. These two buildings are near, right nearby, so kind of, the example I use for is giving this kind of a campus-like feel, so on the same campus, the same general area, we wanted to look and mimic the buildings there, so it's like we just blend in. On the left-hand side is a picture of the Maritime Museum, and that one, of course, that one, of course, has been there for a long time. Interestingly enough, I dug up some of the old photos and various sources, and there were, there have been some changes to that building over the years, there, for example, the porch there on the front where we've got some, some chairs there and such, that didn't, that wasn't part of the building at one point in time, so it's interesting to see the change there, but it's a great thing to look at. And then on the right side, this is the shed for the, for the Ella View, and this one in particular was a good, good thing for us to look at, because size-wise, this was not far off from where we were, where we were thinking for this facility. Now, we're going to, and I'm going to, these slides will come back later, so we'll kind of compare, see if we got our mark. So going to the next slide, you'll actually see the, you'll actually see the south and east elevations of the building. Now you can actually see some lines underneath the building, it shows how deep this wet well for this pump station actually goes, but then you also see where it goes up in the air, about the height of a door, so we obviously had to hide that, that wet well. And you'll, so you'll, you'll see, if you look at the drawing on the right-hand side, we've tried to take the same look as the Ella View Shed, we've got the cupola, the windows, the tin roof, well, the metal roof, and of course, got our board and mat and siding. Now on the side view on the left, technically there was not a porch on the Ella View Shed, but there was one on the, on the Maritime Museum's building, the old, the old boathouse. So we were doing as a design, as an ad alternate, the possibility of having this thing not just be a shed there, but have it where we could, we could have a wooden floor, just like the museum, and have the, have the roof there and have a little front porch sitting, you've got room for several chairs or things for folks to do, and we thought we would put that in as a design alternate, because if that's something that's desired, it's a place for people to sit and get out of the sun, so it's, it's a nice design element that ties into the other. Going to the next slide, we get the other two views, and we wanted to make sure, even though this building is not as long as the Ella View Shed, it's, we wanted to try and mimic as much as possible, so the cupola does have the, the windows there, and then beneath them some matching windows. Now we do have, and on the left-hand side, you can see the side view of the, of the porch. I think this is a, it's, we're trying to, we're trying to find ways to have this thing blend in, look exactly like what's there. Now I will admit it's a little bit, not as long, so the dimensions here, this, this building is about six, six and a half feet shorter than the Ella View Shed, so it's not as long as that shed, but it's certainly of a size and scale so that we're not, we're not sitting there getting a much bigger building, or a different building, in fact, it's a little bit smaller. But, but it's a, again, it's an homage to what we already have there, if we've got, already have something there making it look just like it seems, seems to be a good straightforward path. And going to the next slide, now you can see what I was talking about, looking like the Ella View Shed, trying to mimic the doors, the windows, the cupola, the, even the way, the building materials, and then on the left-hand side, seeing if we can add a porch there just to give us a little something to do there, other, that will give people a chance to sit down. So that's sort of looking at architecturally. Now of course, we've got a lot of, we've got a lot of stuff to do ahead of us, so this was very early days here, we're still in the design phase. Let's go to the next slide, and we always talk on a project, we talk about cost, schedule, and scope of work. We already discussed scope, and I'm just going to reiterate this for the listening public, this board has heard this before, the project cost is 1.128,793, 1.128 million. The 1.106 of that, the vast, vast majority is funded by the state of North Carolina, with 500,000 of loan forgiveness or grant, and the remaining 606,000 at 0% interest for 20 years. So it's pretty cool that we're getting a lift station basically for half-price, and that's something we absolutely have to do, because a current plant is not, is already, we've already seen how it's, it's past its usual life, and it's showing, it's showing its we've already seen how it's, it's past its usual life and it's showing, it's showing its age. Now, I did want to update the project schedule. We talked last time how the design team had had a little bit of impact from COVID where they'd had internal, both their, their staff as well as their sub consultants got hit by COVID, had to quarantine and weren't able to either do site visits or do their geotechnical work. But the state went ahead and allowed us to delay our submittals from December to January. They've accepted it, approved it, and it's been submitted to the state in January. Then the next steps in process, we bid and design package, the state has to approve it and they get a few months to review it, of course. They get that time. And during the time, we also, we also want to make sure, although these are all state actions because this funding is coming from the state and we have to abide by their rules, we also want to make sure it goes through local planning processes. You know, with our own boards and committees and, and all the, you know, the notice in daylight that that, that transpires in those cases. Of course, once the state approves it though, we'll, we'll be turning it loose for a bid process and approval by the state by the fall. And then start, start getting with construction by the end of the year there. They would, and if the current schedule holds, they would actually expect to get this thing in place by August of 2022. So that may seem like a long time off and it's a long process being, with the rules dictated by the state. But we're, we're rocking along right now. Now, one thing I do want to mention because we're talking about local planning processes and things like that, we also want to talk about community engagement. So, you know, in terms of, in terms of public sessions, we've already been putting information out this for, for months in updates, websites, social media, et cetera. We also coordinated, I quoted, coordinated last year with the resident and business representatives of the waterfront condos. But things have changed since then. We want to update them. In fact, we want to update everybody. So we had a, we had one of our commissioners last time talked about, about, you know, the, the importance of, of the picket fence or front porch skills, if you will. And it's something that I missed. When I started here, there was no COVID and we could knock on doors and go into businesses and talk to people. A little bit harder now, but I think we, our goal is to continue, we want to expand our communication program so that we can coordinate with adjacent building owners, sit down with adjacent property owners so they can see it and understand what we're doing, make sure what we're doing. We will get the word out. And in addition, we will go through the public planning, planning approval process, all the corporate notices, agendas, presentations, et cetera. So we can try and get this at all levels, as many people as possible, even COVID world, so they can see what's going on. But the important, the important thing here is, as we go to the last slide, this is, this area is really changing. But this, we have a piece of infrastructure from the 1940s. It's time for us to get it fixed, get it safe, and get it so it protects public health and the environment. Mr. Mayor, that concludes.
Great. Thank you. Melissa, do you have anything further to add to that?
No ma'am, but I am happy to answer any questions.
Okay. So nice to be informed by that great presentation from people. And are there any questions? Yes.
I'm going to disagree with the Park Committee on the cupola. I think it adds something to the appeal of the structure. If we take it off, it's just going to look a bit like a barn. And the other two structures there have features on the roof that are very similar to it. And the building meets the height restrictions with the cupola on it. I just think it's going to look a little too barn-like to take that off. It's a nice feature to add to it to give it a little bit of curvature.
Thank you. I had a question along. I said, how would you, how would you have to alter the appearance if the cupola is removed? That was one of my first, that was the first question I wrote down. My second question, because Park recommended a porch and I, I'm kind of cost conscious. What would the cost difference be if you had to add a porch? And, and it seems like you all did a wonderful job getting funding for this, which is so good for manual. I mean, that's so good. And form and function are critical, but you don't want to financially spend too much on form when the main purpose is function. That's kind of where, that's kind of what I, that was my thought. Not that it's incorrect, but do, you know, does the cupola, would it look bad? And how much would it add to the cost to add the porch for Stephen?
And I should clarify, it wasn't Park members who came up with the idea of the porch. The porch had been suggested by you already. So could you address that?
Madam Chair, James is going to approach the microphone and while he's making his way to the podium. So as James mentioned, this is included as an ad alternate. So we don't necessarily know that cost at this point, but if it wasn't too expensive, we could choose to include that.
Yes, James. And thank you, Madam Chair, members of, members of the board and Town Planner Dickerson. I can confirm actually on both of those counts. So with regard to the porch, it had actually been suggested by us as staff to have that as an ad alternate to the project because we thought it would add, add an element there where instead of just a building there, we've seen how much use the one at the Maritime Museum has in terms of the porch, as well as the, as well as the people just sitting there enjoying getting out of the sun. So we're going to do that as an alternate so we can see if that can be afforded within the budget. With regard to the cupola, I've been in contact with the engineer and of course, they have a sub consultant, the architect, for that particular thing. They have asked me to come back to them. We're preparing to put this out to bid. We would consider that as a deductive alternate. So perhaps we could put it out to bid both ways with and without the cupola. So we can see what cost impact there might be. The one thing they asked me though is if we're going to ask them to do it without, do the deductive alternate without the cupola, they need to do an additional drawing to show the contractor exactly how the roof trusses and the changes would be there. So we're happy to put it out to bid both ways and see what, see what the bid, the bids come back in.
Great. Awesome. Great. Yeah. Thank you. Fields, do you have anything? Do you have any questions or comments?
It looks good as it is.
Good as it is. Well, you know, you know, I mean, Park makes recommendations and this body is a different body and, you know, you can vote your heart, so, in your, your head. So I believe we have to have a motion on this, do you have that, Melissa?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes. So is there any more discussion? Otherwise, a motion can be made to stick with the current.
I'll make a motion to approve the plan as it is submitted here.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor to approve the plan as presented, including the cupola. So is there a second or?
I'll second that motion.
We've got a motion and a second. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed or anyone opposed signify by saying nay. And as a part of the Park Board or the Park Committee, I will say nay because I did agree with the, the comments. So this motion passes through to a law court. Terrific. Thank you all. I think it's going to be a great building no matter what. So, you know, I think it's terrific. So the next item of business is for discussion. And it is a complicated subject with lots of nuances. Fortunately, we have expertise both on the board and in our staff. So the discussion is of storm water fill and runoff management. And this was actually brought up by planning board member Hal Goodman. Hal, I think that was back in February. And so, and so we have known that this is a topic that we would like to discuss. And so I think tonight, let's start that discussion and then I'm sure we'll have other opportunity to do that as well. I think just with our process, I want Al to, Al, I want Hal to take the lead on this. But is there anything, Melissa, that you would like before Hal jumps in?
I, I would just let you know that Member Goodman and I have had conversations about this. And I am prepared at the appropriate time to show you a table comparing what our neighbors have done. Because I know that's often a way to consider looking at policies. So I have received ordinances from Deer County and four of the other towns. And I created a table to show you what they're doing, if they're doing anything to regulate fill on property. So.
Very helpful. So I'm going to turn this over to Board Member Goodman to lead this discussion.
The reason I brought this up is most of the lots that are left for development within the town are less than desirable from the standpoint of they get a lot of standing water on them or other things like that. So with a lot of the building that's going on right now, people are just coming in and we don't have an ordinance as to how much fill you can or can't place or how it should be placed on the lot. And, you know, they're filling it up and I've gotten in several cases, calls from neighbors to these new projects saying, hey, you know, they're putting all this fill on here, the water's just going to runoff onto my property. And I think it's important for us to put something in place to say, yes, you can put fill on, but it has to be contained, you know, within X amount of the footprint of the structure that's going up. And any runoff that's generated has to be dealt with on-site and not allowed to either run into the street or run onto the adjacent properties.
Great.
So, you know, I guess what we need to do is look at what some of the other jurisdictions have done. Because I've seen instances, I know for a fact, they had a really bad issue. We've stolen property up in Corolla and everyone up there, each new construction project added a little more fill than the one prior to it. And it was just a stair step type thing where the lots got so high and eventually, was probably in 2011 or 12, they had such a bad issue in the summer with every thunderstorm. The streets had six to 12 inches of water in them and they actually had to tax everybody and created drainage district to deal with the runoff that was generated by just allowing people to indiscriminately fill the properties. So I want to make sure we avoid something like that here.
So better for us to be proactive than have to face consequences like that, which could be extremely expensive for our town. Right. Any other board members have a, have any experiences or add-on discussion on this?
I agree with Al. Coming up, my wife and I have Scarborough Inn in Mandeville. And of course, Darrell's across the street. We were the first two buildings there from years back. And with everything developing around us, we're the one in knee-deep water every time a tide comes up.
Yeah. You, you have that in your neighborhood.
I live in Roanoke Village and we, we're set because a lot of, and you can see it pretty easily that you see the new homes and you can look right next door when they've overfilled a lot. You can just see, it's very sad to see that happen to especially people who have had those houses for a long, long time.
Exactly. That's, that's why I think we need to put something on the books to just regulate it so that it doesn't get out of hand any further than it already is.
I think we're all.
I think we all agree.
I think we're all in agreement on that. So Melissa, why don't you show us your comparative table? And there are, like Max Head was a really good example. Not that we would use that one particularly, but at least as a place to, to look.
I'm sorry, I have to stop here and then reach here again.
And I can, I just created this just ahead of the meeting. So you all haven't seen this and I will email it around to you all. So you have it. Deer County responded that they have no ordinance regarding fill. But that sometimes environmental health often requires three feet of fill to be brought in to accommodate septic systems. And while the responses I received do not note, do not note that for the other jurisdictions that do not have municipal sewer, I think that is, that is a similar case because Deer County would permit those septic systems as well. So in Duck, no fill is allowed within five feet of the property line and is required to be sloped at a three-feet horizontal run for every one foot of vertical rise. I will note that that's very similar to Max Head as well. Max Head is a little more detailed, quite a bit more detailed, but that seems to be the similar standard that appeared when I was doing this analysis. Kill Devil Hills does not regulate fill. And Southern Shores is interesting. It does not have a fill requirement, but the height calculation for, for building is taken from the average of the original grade at the corners of the proposed structure. And so with every bit of fill that comes in and that essentially elevates the home, their building height is decreased. So that level stays the same. So that is what I found. I, I thought I received a response from Kitty Hawk, but I couldn't find it in my email as I was putting this together. And I, they do have a fill ordinance, but since I didn't have somebody basically summarize it for me, I didn't include that here. But in the meantime, you know, I know that you all aren't taking any action this evening, but aren't likely to take any action this evening. But in the meantime, I can do additional research on Kitty Hawk and then what Currituck County might have done as a result in 2012 from that Corolla.
Don't use that example because they closed a lot of the east-west streets up in Whalehead Beach. And they actually put underground retention in there. Bucked the streets up, put in underground retention ponds and drained everything into the retention ponds. So it was pretty expensive. So we definitely don't want to go that route.
Do you know, I mean, and I can research this as well, but if they, if they did anything similar about how far, if there's a setback line from the property line for fill or anything?
That you'd probably have to check on. I don't know if they did anything with that. I just know because it was shortly after we sold our property up there that they went through all this, creating the drainage district and taxing everybody.
Okay. I will. Thank you. This is such perfect timing to be talking about this because as you know, we have to look at all of our ordinances. We all know this. We have to look at our ordinances for content and clarifying language and really organization into our whole code book. And, and so it's really good timing for us to be thinking about this. So Planner Dickerson, what should our next steps be for this? I, I know we'd like to talk more about it. There's still some unanswered questions. But how should we go about holding our next, our next conversation about this? Or, or, or actually putting something together that is an ordinance that can be used?
Sure. So I would like to answer at, at least these two questions that we have and see if there are additional questions that you all think that are worth researching. I can bring back those answers to you next month. And then if you all feel like you've got a general idea of what kind of policy changes you'd like to recommend, we could do that. I will note, single-family homes are exempt from the stormwater ordinance. And that's kind of where, where we have gotten into this situation. So, and, and you all heard, Madam Chair, from the 20-year-plan working group, of course, there are stormwater regulations throughout the ordinance. They are not in one place. So that might also be another consideration. Do you all want to recommend that they all go in one section together as well? So I am, I am happy to take y'all's lead and, and get any answers that you might have to any questions you might have.
Sure. So yes, and that seemed to be where folks were leaning anyway in that 20-year-plan. So that's something for us to think about. So let's continue this conversation if that's okay with everybody. Our next meeting, May 5th or whatever that is, 4th? 10th? I don't even know.
I moved the calendar because there was so much stuff on this desk. So it would be May the 11th.
May the 11th.
Okay. And so we can get some of the questions answered. We can think about it further. Please feel free to send on to us things that we can be thinking about in terms of how to create the language. Yeah. And I think that that would be good for us to keep this.
Yeah, I would think that we could, you know, either base it on the side setback like the other jurisdictions have done or create some kind of perimeter around the footprint of the structure that's going in there that maintains how far they can carry the fill out beyond the limits of the. out beyond the limits of the structure.
Yeah. And yes, that's a good suggestion and then whatever guidance you can give us as well.
Sure.
Yeah. So that's good. So this was truly for discussion only. So anything else? I just don't want to leave that topic if there's anything else anyone wants to say.
I think, yeah, let's, we'll see, see what we can come up with next month.
To be continued, to be continued. All right. So then the next item on our agenda is Board Member Comments. So I'm just going to go down the row. I'm going to start with Nicole.
I don't have any comments.
No comments. All right, Fields?
No comment.
No comments?
No comment.
Wow, okay. And I don't have anything either. So the next item is, can I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I'll let you make the motion.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that is unanimous and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.